This conference will now be recorded.
It's all good, Troy. You're ready to go.
Thank you, Brenda. All right, so I now open the Planning Commission work session. Can we have roll call?
Commissioner Troy Sherwood.
Present.
Commissioner Curry Gill.
Present.
Commissioner Andy Landon.
Present.
Commissioner Tim Vos.
Present.
Commissioner Grace Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Sophie McGinley.
Present.
And I believe that was it? Did I miss anyone?
Mike Coivilla is here, too.
Hi, Mike. Commissioner Coivilla. And we have Counselor Leonard Sterian in the audience tonight as well.
Thank you, Brenda. So do we have anybody here that would be presenting testimony, not really like anybody that wants to add anything from the public?
No, there's no public here and it's a work session, so we don't have an opportunity for public comment tonight.
Oh, okay, not at all. I guess I missed it. Okay, so in that case, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Carrying none, then item on our agenda is Development Code Update Project Quarterly Check-In. And the work session is now open and we'll have the update from Mark Rust.
Great, thank you Chair and Commissioners. Can you all hear me okay? I assume, yeah.
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 Okay. Great, so for the record, I am Mark Rust, Senior Planner with the City of Springfield. And I'm here to present to you tonight the a check-in, a quarterly check-in on the Development Code Update Project. This item has been in front of you multiple times. The last time I checked in with you was on July 7th. That would have been your second quarter check-in for this calendar year. This is being your third quarter check-in. And quite a bit has been happening. And I'm going to start with an update on the Phase 1 of the project, which is the housing phase. And I'll apologize ahead of time to Counselor Ster. He heard this presentation last night at the council meeting. But there will be some updates for the Planning Commission on the direction that the council did give to us last night in my, in the work session and presentation from council. So the, the Phase 1 of the project for housing has been going on quite a while. You'll recall that at the beginning of this calendar year, we released a public review draft of the housing code for input from the public. We, we knew that we were ahead of the curve on releasing that draft housing code with the state process of the new housing rules being drafted to implement new legislation. I'll refer to it as the Middle Housing Legislation or House Bill 2001. And together also, there's a kind of partner piece of legislation, House Bill 2003. But it's mainly House Bill 2001, the Middle Housing Legislation. And just to reiterate that middle housing is includes duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes and cottage cluster development. So I've been on the state committees, both the Rural Advisory Committee as well as a Model Code Technical Advisory Committee. Sandy Bellson's been on the Technical Advisory Committee for the Housing Production Strategy, part of the rulemaking process. So we've been involved at the state level for the rulemaking on House Bill 2001 and House Bill 2003. We knew going into our code update, well, when we initially set out for the code update, we, the legislation didn't exist yet. But we, we went into releasing the public review draft of the housing code, knowing that we were ahead of the curve on the legislation. We tried to anticipate how we envisioned the legislation being implemented. And now that we're getting towards the end of the rulemaking process, it's our sense that we are going to have to pull back the housing, the draft housing code that we released and make some changes to reflect what are likely to be the housing rules that could get adopted next, or excuse me, in November. So I'll touch a little bit on that process. And what's happened most recently is that the DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development at the state level proposed some draft rules to their commission, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, or LCDC. They had a public hearing on those draft rules on the 25th. So was that last week or the week before? And they didn't take action. They directed the department to do a little bit more work to the draft rules. And then it will, the rules will be brought back to the commission at their November hearing. It's November 12th and 13th with the anticipation that they will adopt the rules in November. The legislation gives them, gives the state a deadline of December 30th of this year to adopt those rules. There was some very brief discussion at the commission hearing that there's the potential, if they didn't get them adopted in November, they might have to have an emergency hearing in December. But that doesn't seem to necessarily be clear at this point. So with the department going back to do some more work on those housing rules, they've reconvened the Rules Advisory Committee together as a joint meeting with the Technical Advisory Committee. That meeting will be held this Thursday, the 8th. I'll be attending that meeting. There will be a second Joint Rules Advisory and Tac Committee on the Housing Production Strategy portion of it as well. That'll be the meeting next week. So the commission gave some specific, well, not very specific direction, but some general direction for the department to continue to revise and make clarification edits to the cottage housing rules together with some technical edits to just make the rules read more clearly. So we'll know more in November, hopefully, how the rules are going to look. But I lay out in your memo for tonight's meeting, kind of some options of how the different paths that could, a jurisdiction like Springfield could take to implement the rules. I laid out the four options. I refer to a memo that was sent, a communication memo that was sent to the city council on September 21st in the packet, and I included that memo in the packet for you tonight. I do want to just point out that there is a typo in that memo. I could share my screen and show you exactly where that typo is. This is your packet for tonight. It's Attachment 2. And it's page 5 of 5 is the memo that we provided to council. It was a summary of kind of the legislative process for the rulemaking for House Bill 2001, 2003. The second half of the memo focused on 2001 and middle housing. And the typo is a date. The date I put in here is incorrect. Sorry for all the scrolling here. This date right here, large cities have until June 30th, 2021. That date should actually be 2022. So I was a year off. So we actually have, from the end of this calendar year, we have essentially 18 months, a year and a half to implement or figure out if and how we want to implement the new rules. And that is beyond kind of the timeline of the scope for our housing phase of the project. We hope to and then anticipate having our housing rules adopted and be implemented well before that. But I lay out some scenarios in the discussion of the memo tonight about how that might look. And it's kind of two extreme ends of a spectrum. I think there's plenty of room and opportunity to discuss middle ground on how we might approach that. And again, we'll know more once the rules are finalized. And additionally, we're going to continue to work with our state DLC, local representative to discuss how that might look as well. One of our big concerns, and it's outlined in the memo for you tonight, as well as one of your other attachments in your packet tonight, is the written testimony that we submitted to LCDC for their hearing. One of the items we brought up in that written testimony was the issue of requiring a comprehensive plan update due to the rules basically requiring us to exceed our density that is laid out in both our zoning code and our comprehensive plan. So figuring out the dynamic between how we could allow the middle housing in compliance with the rules, but exceed our density standards in our comprehensive plan and how we might update the comprehensive plan potentially later and not have to do it concurrently is some of the thought. I will just mention briefly that in addition to the written testimony that we provided to LCDC, Counselor Steve Mo testified verbally and virtually to the commission, as well as myself, provided some additional verbal testimony to the commission. So that's kind of the high-level overview of Phase 1 on housing. I do want to talk quickly about Phase 2 and Phase 3 as well. So Phase 2 of the large code update project is the Employment Lands Phase to deal with commercial and industrial lands. We are underway with that phase as well. We have convened the, our local Technical Advisory Committee to help us assist on working on revising sections of our code, dealing with that. The first section we've been working on is our Minimum Development Standards, which is kind of like a mini site plan review. And that section has also been undergoing an internal city staff review, technical review. And then we're proceeding with also then additional sections, including the Site Plan Review Section, as well as the Commercial and Industrial Zones sections themselves. There'll be a number of other connected sections mainly dealing with infrastructure development standards. We do hope to continue to revise those sections related to Phase 2. And hopefully by the beginning of next calendar year, have a public review draft ready to release for that. So you'll be seeing more on this as well, moving forward. And then lastly, Phase 3. So last night, we presented to the city council that we are not on track for Phase 3. According to the current schedule, we should already be underway with Phase 3, doing work on Phase 3, and we have not begun that work yet. We did ask city council last night for their approval to extend the timeline and basically just focus on Phase 1 and Phase 2 running concurrently right now. And then engage with Phase 3 once we get Phase 1 and Phase 2 to a point where they're a little less work. And I anticipate that being, once they're kind of in the public hearing process for adoption, both in front of you, the Planning Commission, and then ultimately you, this body would make a recommendation to city council. We can be working on Phase 3 then, at that point. The city council did, after a fair bit of questions and discussion about all that's going on, give their approval to go ahead and, and delay the Phase 3 and focus on Phase 1 and Phase 2. One of the comments I remember hearing, I can't remember exactly which counselor, but said that, you know, that we want to get at least part of it across the finish line. They definitely, the city council, I would say as a whole, is interested in getting some code in place that will allow development to occur in a kind of more straightforward and easier to understand process. So they're, I would say anxious to see the Phase 1 and Phase 2 come to completion and be implemented. So that's where our focus is going to be. So based on that direction, we anticipate coming back to you, the Planning Commission, acting as the CCI for revision to the Community Engagement Plan, which we have done before. We've revised the timeline at least once before. We've made some other minor edits to the, the Community Engagement Plan that the timeline is also part of. And so we will be bringing back to you a formal revision to that for, to reflect that direction from council last night. So that's kind of the big, high-level touching on some of the main points. I'll turn it back over to you for questions or comments and discussion. I'm happy to talk more about anything in more detail or answer questions. So with that.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions from commissioners?
Troy, it's Tim.
Can I go with Tim?
Are you picking me up on, on visual?
No, but I, we can hear you.
Okay. I have a number of things to touch on and I've got them segregated by the attachment that, that the information was included on. So looking at Attachment 1, there is one item that I was curious about is that you were suggesting as a possibility moving forward in this interim period using parallel codes, which I presume is one set of languages reflecting what the state's desire is. And the other code option would be more in line with the thinking of the City of Springfield. And it seems, unless there's more detail to it, it seems like that would be an administrative headache. Because if you have an applicant come in and they're given a choice between two options, then later on, when the final code language is approved, you, I presume, would have to maintain the understanding with the applicant as to what direction they were going. And you could potentially have people with it, working under a different set of rules during, and trying to keep track of all that. Is that, is that a possible problem or is that still something you think is workable?
So I would say your comments are spot on. That would be fairly difficult administratively to implement. And we heard very similar comments from the city council last night. That's not an ideal situation. We're trying to make our code simpler, not more complex. And so that was really laid out as kind of an extreme example of if we, if we did adopt a code that was not compliant, that the state model code will be imposed upon us. The state model code has morphed in terms of how they've written the rules. Originally, it would have been kind of an all or nothing proposal. If we didn't adopt a compliant code by the deadline, that the entire state model code would apply to us. They've made it clear now that they've revised the language of the rules so that it's more of a piecemeal approach that if certain sections are compliant, then only those of the model code would apply. So, but regardless, it would be difficult and complex and not ideal. And at this point, I don't envision that being a scenario that we would pursue.
Mark?
Yeah.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt. Tim, do you mind muting your mic?
Yeah, thank you. I was getting quite a bit of feedback as well. Thanks.
No problem.
So anyway, that was about all I was going to say is it, I don't envision pursuing that path necessarily. Again, it was presented as kind of a extreme example of one to the spectrum of how things could potentially play out. So Commissioner Vos, I don't know if that answers your question or addresses your concern there.
No, it does. Thank you. It does bring to mind the conversation that we had recently regarding Marco La Meadows, where we have a project that's going to span this interim period between the existing code and what new code language ultimately prevails. And so we're seeing that that is a, an issue for an applicant having to essentially change horses in the middle of the stream. But considering the size of the project, I would imagine that he's going to want to look very closely at the new language and make some adjustments accordingly as, as time goes along. It seemed like it was something along the similar lines of looking at two code sets, two sets of code at the same time.
Part of your original comment was along the lines of, you know, if we did have parallel codes, one would be kind of a Springfield code and one would be the state code. And so I would say there is going to be a fair bit of work trying to create a code that is compliant with the state rules that is also palatable to the Springfield community. I would say the model code and even the minimum compliance standards that the state is putting forward are very prescriptive and require very specific things of the city and how we must do things. So there, there's going to be some probably hard conversations about what we're going to have to allow as mandated by the state that may not seem really appealing to citizens or even you as elected or appointed officials in the city council as an elected official.
Thank you.
Other commissioners?
Troy, I have a few. Go ahead, Tim. I knew you were still, you still had some questions. Thank you.
Tim, do you have more? You may be muted, Tim.
I'm having trouble getting the mic to come on, so, which was what I was having a problem with. I also have a couple of items on Attachment 2. One being on page 2 of 5, there's a, a reference to as far as identifying the people that are in need of specific housing types, reference to gentrification. And I kept thinking that I don't see why that would be necessarily helpful in getting information on people because it seems like to obtain that type of information, you'd have to delve into people's personal history, which I would think is a little invasive. So it struck me as being something outside the norm of what was normally being asked for.
Yeah, and if Sandy, I know Sandy's on the meeting, if she's available to speak to that, she may want to. This, that's a portion of the legislative update memo that went to council. And I think the portion you're referring to is more related to House Bill 2003 that has to do with the state rules that are going to require us to do basically like a new housing needs analysis. I honestly haven't been tracking that portion of the legislation as closely and Sandy's been working on it. So I don't know, Sandy, did you want to speak to that at all?
Sure. Commissioner Vos, that section isn't asking us to really get information about the people. It's more about identifying characteristics of neighborhoods that may lead to gentrification. You know, and in our local context, Glenwood often comes up as an example. So where you have low-income households who may either be renting or owning their homes and then you're allowing for redevelopment that might be worth, you know, make their property values much greater. But then where do those low-income households go if they cannot afford to live there anymore? And so that question is really asking the city to think about whether we're setting up a situation that is encouraging gentrification or are there measures that we can take to mitigate it? And so as we're identifying strategies to increase housing production, keeping in mind the potential ramifications of that. Did I answer your question, Commissioner Vos?
Yes, you did. Also on Attachment 2, there's a reference made that if the city is not in full compliance of what the state is requiring, there are financial implications, impact on financial resources. What specifically can they do in that regard that would have an impact on the city?
So they could take back any kind of funding that they might otherwise provide us through technical assistance grants. There's not a lot that LCDC and DLCD can really do. And so that's been part of the struggle. But I'm not aware that they can really go beyond their own department in terms of grant funds or otherwise. So, but it would just put us, if we were not compliant, we would be less likely to be able to obtain grant funding from DLCD.
Thank you. I have one, one further comment on Attachment 2, and that'll finalize my thoughts on that particular attachment, is that looking at these percentages of housing types that are suggested, I think that there probably should be emphasis made on making a distinction between what can be allowed and what is being required. Because I think in saying that these types are allowed in certain categories of residential land, it's not required than those percentages would probably be considerably lower than what they're represented on, on the report.
Yeah, that, that's a great point, Commissioner Vos. And the, those percentages listed there on the bottom of page 4 and top of page 5 of Attachment 2 are what is, it's one, it's, it's an alternative path that DLCD is proposing that cities could use that if they didn't want to meet the minimum compliance standards, that they want to choose a different path, that they would at least have to show that these were the percentages that were allowed. There, there are no percentages where any mandate requires a city to require a certain amount of housing. It's just that it is an allowance. So you're right in pointing out that a much smaller percent would actually likely get built. And they've recognized that in their feasibility studies as well. And, and it's part of the justification for these percentages being quite high. They, there was some discussion at the LCDC hearing that these percentages should even potentially be higher or adjusted in some cases. So these aren't likely to be the final numbers, but these are just what should, the amount of, the number of lots that would allow the middle housing type, not that it would be required.
Thank you. I have one further question on Attachment 3, and then I'll get out of everybody's way regarding the density standards and the letter that indicated that the city isn't particularly happy with the stance that the state is taking. And the question is that given that there's, what I understand, 22 other cities that are in the same population group, do other cities have like thoughts on this issue? Or is it a case where other cities either don't have density standards or they have more flexible standards and they can live with what the state is suggesting? So it seems like they aren't really considering the standards the standards in any great extent in what they're proposing.
So we have been working in conjunction with other cities through the League of Oregon Cities. The, I would say there's at least a handful of other cities that are we, a lot of us have been trying to convey a similar message and that it's not a one size fits all and that there needs to be more flexibility. I know Beaverton has been involved heavily on that conversation, the city of Bend, city of Wilsonville. There's others as well. But yeah, there, being that there's multiple different ways to approach how to comply with the rules, there's certain cities that are focusing on different parts of the rules. And as a, for instance, some cities use master planning extensively. And so some cities have been really focusing on the master plan provisions of the rules to use the, those master plan provisions to kind of lock in some density. Although that conversation's been very complex as well. But anyway, I think to answer your question or to respond to your point is that we aren't alone. There are definitely concerns from other cities. And you know, but again, there's, there's cities that'll figure out different ways of trying to use different portions of the rule that will best fit their situation.
Thank you. That's all I have, everybody. So let somebody else have a turn. Thank you.
Mike, I believe you were gonna go next.
Yes, just, just briefly, first of all, I'd like to thank both Mark and Sandy for their work with the state. I submitted written comments to the state on, for their 925 meeting, and I also CC'd my state senator and state representative. And it seems to me as if they are, they're, they've, they've really got a misinterpretation of the law as to what in areas means. And I also am kind of surprised by the allowed amounts of the 70 and 80% as well as the 7,000 and 5,000 square foot for the duplex and triplex. 7,000 square feet for a triplex, that's really actually still quite a small lot. That's only like an 80 by 80 lot. And 5,000 square feet, that's only around 70 by 70. So I am just going to continue to comment to the state, but I understand that we do need to be in compliance. So appreciate, again, appreciate your work.
And I believe, I believe Sophie wanted to go next?
Yes. Thank you, Troy. So I have a few notes to read, so please bear with me. But the first thing that I wanted to say is that I've been really closely following this bill and the project. I actually work on this in my role at the city of Eugene. And my views do not reflect my work at the city of Eugene. But this is something that I've been following. I've attended every single rulemaking advisory committee and technical advisory committee. Meaning I have read through all of the packets, written summaries for the packets, very familiar with this. So the first thing is that allowing housing to be built in areas does not necessarily, or does not mandate the construction of that housing. What we're really going to see is slow incremental development. And this is especially pertinent, I think, to the density argument that staff is making. So two examples of this. The first one is that the city of Minneapolis was the very first city in the country to allow triplexes with no parking minimums by right on every single residential lot in their city. Since that was passed in early 2020, three, do three triplexes have been built in the city of Minneapolis, which is fairly larger than the city of Springfield. Another example, it's a little bit closer to home, is with the was with 80s being allowed to be built on lots all around Springfield. We really have not seen one pop up in every single backyard that it's allowed in. With the changes to the comprehensive plan as being a barrier, I wanted to just point out that I strongly suggest not proceeding with the the parallel code process, similar to what Commissioner Vos brought up. I think it would be an administrative headache, and I think that it conflicts with our goal for this project to make the code easier to use. I think that makes it a lot more complicated for staff, for developers, and for just common folks that are trying to do something in their backyard. But with the comprehensive plan amendments, those usually are pretty nutty and complicated whenever they come to planning commission and city council. But in this case, with the amendments, we would know exactly what we need to do, and it wouldn't really be up for debate. And so I really encourage you to not see that as a huge barrier because it's something we could just meet and get done and move on with. Then I wanted to talk about some of the things that I've heard said tonight. I wrote down that this may not be palatable to the Springfield community, that there would have to be hard conversations. Excuse me one second, my partner is cooking. I think I should be in the clear now. Oh, one second. Okay, I think I'm in the clear. This is just the joys of working from home. So I, I heard the words that this wouldn't be palatable to the Springfield community, that there'd be hard conversations, and that it's not appealing. And the following is said with just utmost respect for staff in the Springfield community. This is just really disappointing to hear. As somebody that went to school specifically to study planning and received a degree in it, as somebody that works as a professional planner, as somebody that is a young professional renter living in Springfield, it's just disappointing to hear. Oh my goodness. So sorry about that. Okay, I think I'm in the clear. My partner says he feels really bad, everybody. So what I wanted to say with all of this experience, you know, reading about planning, practicing planning, just kind of keeping my, you know, my ear to the ground and hearing the beat for, I don't know, just how people are generally reacting to this code, is that it's really exciting. House Bill is really an exciting opportunity. Work like the Minneapolis's 2040 Plan and House Bill 2001 are widely celebrated in the planning world for undoing harm. This exclusive single family zoning has perpetuated throughout our communities nationwide, not just in Springfield. But because I really wanted advocate for things that are in line with what our community wants, I specifically wanted to touch on the point that this isn't palatable to the Springfield community. So I went online and I looked at our council goals. And I wanted to touch on some council goals that I really think the implementation of middle housing touches on. So the first one is the goal to provide financially responsible and innovative government services. With that, House Bill 2001 is innovative. We are the first state to ever require something like this. Minneapolis was the first city, and Oregon is the first state. So I really encourage us to to get on board with that, that this is innovative. And yeah, it's scary and different, but best practices show that this is the right thing to do. The second one is to encourage economic development and revitalization through community partnerships. Allowing more housing types in more places does encourage development, and it encourages people to invest in our community. The fourth goal is to foster an environment that values diversity and inclusion, and I think this one may be the most important. So exclusive single family zoning fosters a lack of diversity and continued exclusion. This is well documented nationwide. Allowing more housing types, more shapes and sizes in more places increases diversity in neighborhoods and opens the opportunity for inclusivity in all parts of our city, not just where certain housing types are allowed. And the last one is to promote and enhance our hometown, hometown feel while focusing on livability and environmental quality. And I really do think that we would promote and enhance our hometown feel while focusing on livability by allowing more people of different incomes and a bit, and abilities to live in different neighborhoods. All in all, House Bill 2001 is an effort to reduce exclusion and increase opportunity. And it's an opportunity for us to undo past harms. And I really encourage us to change the way that we are viewing this. And I encourage us to embrace the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Counselor Stare, were you playing to Pat?
I, I had several questions for Mark on the last meeting that we had. And so I, I'm, I'm perfectly satisfied with what he reported. And I, I'm very grateful to Mark for being very thorough in his coverage of this issue. Thanks.
Counselor Stare, I'm not sure if you noticed that your camera was on.
I was. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Does anybody else want to add anything? Yeah, Curry?
Thanks. Yeah, I do. A couple of, of points. One is that I, I agree with Commissioner McGinley that this, the intention of these laws, I think, fit very well with what we have been talking about for the last couple of years that I've been on the planning commission. I know that the city council has talked about for longer, which is the housing issue. And I think that there are ways, I think it's timely that we're in the middle of this process and I think it's important that we find ways to make it manageable, make it a manageable process to implement this law and make it usable in, in our code. I'm sorry that it's like slows it down a little bit, but I, I kind of am grateful for the, for the timing. I think that it is challenging language for cities to figure out how to implement in different ways locally. But I hope the intention of, of the review of this rulemaking is more about how to make it work than how to not make it work. Because there are many ways, and I will, I, I brought it up before, but historic districts are a really great example of how you can see so many ways that triplexes and cottage buildings and apartments and things can fit in a neighborhood that is single, you know, typically single family residential. If you walk through the Washburn, you will see all of those examples. And they do it in historic buildings. So I have followed this process as well through my job dealing with historic code and how this fits into it, even though that it's called out, that they have some exclusion around that. We're encouraging people in our office to figure out how to have increased housing density in these places while maintaining historic character in it, and it can be done. So I appreciate the participation of Springfield staff at the state level. I am sure that they are thoughtful about what it means to development processes here in Springfield and have learned, probably heard a lot more than I have because I have not attended all those meetings of the ramifications. So I'm grateful that they're thinking of those ramifications. But I also don't want to jump to the conclusion that we don't want this kind of housing in certain areas of our community. The other thing I would like to add is I completely understand the council's direction to focus on the first two phases of this code, development code update. I just want to say that that third phase is critical. And I, I hope it's just an extension and not sort of a, a putting off for longer. It sounds like it's just an extension. The focus of getting those two implemented in place makes sense. I just don't want to lose sight of that third section. And I'm hoping that what was listed in that third section are not the only things that are going to be addressed. Because there are other pieces of the code that do need update and haven't had updates for decades. So, but thanks again to staff for your work on this. I think that there can be good solutions that encourage more housing. And the update was clear and helpful, and the timeline is also clear. And I look forward to the CCI meeting to talk about the community engagement. Thanks.
If I could just comment, Chair, on the point about the, the items I listed for the phase three. Commissioner Gill mentioned that is just a very small subset that is not intended to be anywhere near a comprehensive list of what would be included in phase three. So we're well aware that there's many other sections of the code. I, I fondly refer to phase three as the everything else phase. And so there, there is a lot more that will be included in phase three as well. So truly everything else. I mean, we do need to look at all sections of our code and update it. So just wanted to clarify that point. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from commissioners?
Troy, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
And I understand there's been some different opinion on this, but as I read through this thing, we have this state reading for, or redoing building codes where you know, I'm not sure how you meet the needs of, you know, the neighborhood that I'm in is a pretty low density, you know. You know, we have lots of about, oh, you know, 60 by 80 or about that. And I'll confess, having somebody put a triplex up next door to me would, would, you know, or across the street from me. You know, I deliberately picked an area in town where, where it is low density and I, you know, I'm, I'm just afraid. You know, I don't want to take away anybody else's, but I also don't want them to take away kind of, kind of the environment that I wanted to live in. And I don't think that I'm alone in Springfield in, in feeling that I don't want to live next door to, to a fourplex. I don't know if there's a way for that or not. It sounds like it's kind of a done deal, but there's part of the community that probably shares that concern.
Troy?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and say that, you know, I also see some, some difficulty with, and agree with Commissioner Landen in regard to that. And another thing I've found that I, I've noticed this, having lived in large cities myself, I lived in Seattle for quite a few years, and I also lived in Los Angeles. And when, when you get these type of zoning changes, what generally occurs is the development that's going to occur on these duplexes and triplexes within single family, established, single family neighborhoods. Initially, there will be some infill where there's room to build them on vacant lots or where people own two lots or something like that and decide to, to sell one. But then what occurs after that is, is, is really gentrification. And what happens is that the developers find the low hanging fruit being the older, single family, older, smaller, single family residents, perhaps not in the best of shape. And that would be a tear down there. And I've seen that over and over again in this, particularly in the city of Seattle. And housing prices went through the roof when, while, while this was occurring. And I'm really talking about, I'm talking about 20% per year in the increase in housing costs while this, while this was occurring. And what this, the effect of this gentrification And what this, the effect of this gentrification was that your younger working individuals who could afford an owner of a fixer house were no longer able to afford those. And they were also no longer able to afford to live within the working areas of Seattle. And they had to move out to apartments at the periphery of the city and then had to commute longer distances in to their jobs in the city. So I unfortunately lived through this type of non-restrictive zoning. And what I found was not ideal. And as long as we're discussing historical and actual conditions, as Commissioner McGinley brought up, I thought I would bring up my residence in the city of Seattle for 20 years. And what I saw happen as a result of this type of zoning change. Thank you.
Do other commissioners have input? So I had a question for you, Mark, just about these four approaches, particularly the performance standards approach. I just wanted to get a little bit better handle on. So with the percents allowed, when you're trying to meet these performance standards, is it up to the city to determine which single-family detached home areas, the 20% that they wouldn't be allowed on are? And then demonstrate that 80% are allowed? Or would it be essentially different things driving it? And just the city has to absolutely ensure the 80%, but it would be driven not by attempting to get to 80%? But driven by other standards?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. If I, I think I understand your question right. The performance standard percentages are an option that a city could choose to use in lieu of primarily, I'm going to use the triplex, fourplex example. And so, and we've heard a little bit about, and you've likely read about the 5,000 and 7,000 square foot lot sizes. So if you allow a triplex on every 5,000 square foot lot and a fourplex on every 7,000 square foot lot, then you don't have to talk about percentages and these performance standards. If you didn't, if a city doesn't want to allow triflexes on every 5,000 square foot lot and fourplexes on every 7,000, you could choose as an alternative to make the argument that you want to allow them in other areas or in a different scheme, as long as you met these percentages. So you're right. Or I guess to answer your question, it would be up to the city then to say, here's the 80% of lots that we want to allow triflexes on, as long as we could say. So we might say, this part of town, you know, the west half of town is where we want all the triflexes to be. We're going to allow them on every lot, regardless of size, down to 1,000 square foot lot size, as long as that's 80% of the lots. Now, I'm being, I'm making up an example that doesn't really work because the second part of the standard is that you also have to show that, well, actually, it might work, but the second part of these performance standards is that at least one middle housing type other than the duplexes is allowed on 75% of all residential lots and parcels within each census block group. But what we could do is, you know, and again, this is just kind of a made up example, but we could say there's a certain part of town that's really conducive to, say, townhomes because they're, the way the lot pattern or maybe street layout is configured, it's conducive to narrow lots to allow townhomes. Or there might be a more suburban or almost semi-rural area of town that's more conducive to cottage clusters because they're large lots and that could allow more cottage housing or something like that. So we could kind of do sub-area planning and figure out where we wanted to try and allow different housing types and then make the case under these performance standards, as long as we met these percentages, that we could do it that way and not have to meet the 5,000 and 7,000 square foot. And there's a lot more to just that 5,000, 7,000. That's really the minimum compliance standard. And there's minimum compliance standards for townhomes and cottage clusters, the other types as well. So I hope that answers your question. It is up to the cities to figure out where they would be allowed and demonstrate that we met those performance standards.
That does answer my question. Thank you, Mark. And as a follow-up question, I just want to know, once you determine what those are and where those are, how set in stone is that? When I say that, I mean, so say you determine that 85% of the places in Springfield allow a triplex. Then those 85% of places, will that change? How can that change? Does that change in the city zoning map? Can a developer come and say, hey, you're over 80%, so you'll still be in compliance? If you, you know, make that no longer, or, you know, no longer allowed here, that type of thing?
Yeah, that's a great question and it's been a topic of discussion. And it's been a moving target, I'll say as well, in the rulemaking process. My understanding of where it currently is in the draft rules, and again, this may change by the November LCDC meeting. What I think they say currently is that a city would have to demonstrate those performance standard metrics are met. Every time that we do a housing needs analysis update, which is part of what Sandy's been working on, the House Bill 2003 stuff, we will now be on kind of a mandated regular schedule to do a housing needs analysis update every eight years, I think it is. Our first one is due in six years. And then after that, the first one's due in six years, I think we'll be on a regular rotation of every eight years. We'll have to make the case again. I think that's how that would work if we chose to do those performance standards.
Okay, thank you, Mark. The last piece I had was, is there any possibility or room for combinations? And if you were so inclined to use part of one standard and part of another standard, or not standard, but part of one method and another part of another method, if it fit better, a combination of these things, as long as everything you do is within at least these four options?
Yeah, and again, I'll just preface by, they are draft rules still and so they're not final. And again, it has been a moving target. But originally, it was, like I mentioned, an all or nothing approach, mainly to do with the model code. It was either we adopt a 100% compliant code or the model code is entirely put on a city to use. Now they backed away from that and now it's more of a piecemeal approach. And so just trying to think of your question off the top of my head, I think there probably is a way that we could say, you know, say for triflexes and fourplexes, we are going to allow those on every 5,000 and 7,000 square foot lot. But for townhomes and cottage clusters, maybe we want to not do what the minimum compliance standards say for those and rather, we want to meet the performance standards for those two housing types. I think you could mix and match like that at this point, the way the rules are. I think there would be allowance for that.
Understood. Thank you, Mark. And I know this, none of this is set in stone yet, but just to get an idea of where it's tracking. I appreciate all the clarification. Just, are there any other commissioners that want to add anything?
Chair, I could add a couple of things if you had a minute.
Go ahead, Grace.
Thanks. I've been holding off because we've had these conversations in the Governance Committee meeting. And so Mark has already heard my opinions on this. And I think, you know, after hearing what the, my fellow commissioners have brought up, I think some good points. One of the things that I really, for lack of a better word, struggled with before, and I still am, is those percentages that we see in the packet, those percentages are so high, almost unrealistically high. And the other thing that I'm seeing is that we had talked about in the Governance Committee meeting is that we are classified, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, as a large city. So we're, thank you, we're held to the same standards as Portland. And that, to me, is completely unrealistic. They have a whole different ways and means up there. They have a different, their systems are different. They have transportation that can support that, that large growth and potential growth. Our transportation system, you know, I would be curious to hear how LTD feels about that. They have increased routes, I could imagine. And I know that that doesn't have as large of an impact on what we're talking about. But we have to know that when we have the ability, you know, 80% or whatever those percentages are, I don't have them directly in front of me, when we build those, and, you know, as Commissioner McGinley had pointed out, that there was a city that only had three built. But that's, I would be curious to know when that was because we're in unprecedented time right now. And one of the largest influx times where we're seeing a lot of people still moving in to our area without the suitable housing, to where I could see that wouldn't be the case for us, where we would see a minimal amount of those housing types being built. And so when those housing types are being built, there has to be, if we're talking about there not being the parking standard at the duplexes, triflexes and fourplexes, you know, those people are going to have to be writing public transportation. And does, can our public transportation sustain the growth we're about to see because of us being held to the same standards as Portland? So these are things that I'm just trying to keep top of mind to have a 30,000 level view instead of just, you know, seeing right now that we're in a housing crisis and we need to create housing. I agree with that 100%. You know, I'm in the industry of that. And I completely see that every day, especially in this market, after all of the fires. But I think it's really important that we also stay aware of, it's not just the homes that we're looking at here, but we also have to look at the infrastructure and how that is going to have an effect on us.
Do other commissioners have comments?
Chair, if I could just make a follow-up comment to some of what I've heard tonight?
Yeah, I think Andy may have unmuted. Would you like to go before or after?
I can wait.
Andy, did you have something to add?
Well, I was going to ask, you know, I mean, because the last time we met, we of course, of course, talked about Marco La Meadows and some of these other, you know, that really are high-density neighborhoods. And, you know, is there, is there room in the law? And of course, Mark, you'd be the expert on this, to say, well, okay, we're going to build some of these communities where there's, you know, a lot of really close, high-density housing and people like that. Or maybe we're going to make some, you know, four or five-story, you know, stuff like they've been doing in Eugene and deliberately leave some low-income or low-density housing because there's also a demand for that in the market. Feedback on that?
I think the short answer to what I think the question you asked is, is no, there's not room in the law to do that. The intent of the law is pretty clear that they, the state wants the middle housing. In, the legislation doesn't say this, but it says essentially it's in all areas. The legislation says in areas. The way the rules are defining are, for all intents and purposes, going to be in all areas. And I'll just clarify too, you know, you make the comment that Marco La Meadows is high-density. I think there's some people that would argue and say that it's really not high-density. So the middle housing is really not meant to be high-density. Some people may live next to a fourplex and feel like it's high-density, but it's really not. You mentioned some of the five-story buildings in Eugene. That's really more your typical high-density. But I think Commissioner McKinley touched on the idea that really it's, it's a lot of the intent, I think, is for integration of housing types. And so you get not exclusive, single-family home neighborhoods. You get integrated housing types, like I think it was Commissioner Gill mentioned, as you see in historic districts. So we do have multiplexes mixed in with single-family homes. We do have small cottage clusters mixed in to neighborhoods that have a variety of housing types. And so I think that makes sense. I think, I do want to just mention that I did use the words, you know, having hard conversations and some of these housing types potentially not being appealing or palatable. I don't want to give the impression that that's staff's view. It's not. I, as staff, am embracing the state law. I'm trying to represent Springfield. I've gotten a lot of different direction from City Council and the Governance Committee. And I, so I don't want some of the words I've used to be held that I hold those views. So, but I think it's emblematic of the conversation we've had tonight. There's a diversity of opinion about what, you know, wanting to live next to a fourplex or not, or what feels like high-density or what is or isn't high-density. And I've heard from a lot of members of the public that have reached out to me on the project in general. And so I've heard this diversity of opinion about people thinking it's a good thing or thinking it's a bad thing. And I just think, when I say I think there's going to be hard conversations, it's because, not because I want them to be hard conversations, but I just, I've heard both sides of the conversations already. And I think, and I think even some of the planning commissioners are going to be on different sides of some of these conversations. So I think that's exciting. I think we're moving in a good direction. I think it is fitting that it's part of the code update project that we are within. And so we're just moving forward with implementing it to the way we can.
Mark, I had one more question as a result of that. At the top of Attachment Two, Page Two, it says, "Large city may regulate or limit development of middle housing other than duplexes on the following types of lands and list master-planned communities." And I just wanted to get a better understanding. If a community is master-planned, that means that this, these apply in a different way or don't, won't, don't need to be applied? Or am I misunderstanding that text?
Well, this is a very confusing part of the conversation for me. So there's two pieces on the rules to the master-planned community part. And one is for pre-existing master-planned communities. And then there's new master-planning communities that would come online after these rules come into play. And honestly, because we don't do too many master-planned communities, I haven't followed the conversation super close. And I understand the rules, the draft rules around what would be new master-planned communities better than I understand what is being proposed for existing master-planned communities. But I'll start with my limited understanding of existing master-planned communities. And that is, I believe, and don't quote me on this because I'd need to double check, but that if the existing master-planned community meets a certain density threshold throughout the master-planned community, then that master-planned community can kind of be off limits to the new middle housing code. And there's a couple of numbers out there. I think one was eight units to the eight units breaker. I think that's net density, or it might be 12. I think that's a net density, or it might be twelve. And, and Commissioner McKinley may be able to remember some of this too, if she's followed any of that. But what happened, what, some of the discussion at the LCDC hearing that took place on new master-planned communities, it seems like, and there will be more discussion about this at the joint RAC-TAC meeting that'll happen this Thursday. But my understanding is, the intent is to not allow new master-planned communities to be exempt from the middle housing rules. So the, the, the example that was talked about is, you know, uh, I think it's Villa Bois in Wilsonville up in the Portland metro area. Um, or we could use our local example of Marco La Meadows. I'll just use that. And I don't know the specifics about Marco La Meadows, but I'll just make it up for the sake of example. So say the entire master-planned community of Marco La Meadows is twelve units per acre on average. There's some apartment buildings, there's some townhomes, and there's some detached single-family homes. Um, as soon as any of those units are built, or say, a detached single-family home is built, somebody could instantly convert then that single-family home to a duplex, because duplexes are allowed outright on every lot. And there's nothing we could do, or the rules aren't set up to allow us to be able to do anything about that. And I think if the, if the lot's large enough, if somebody, um, built a single-family home on a larger lot and then wanted to, you know, it could be the day after it was done, or it could be ten years later, build two more units, because a lot, a big part of the middle housing legislation is also allowing conversion of existing internal conversion. So you could convert internally an existing single-family home into multiple units. So you could take a garage, for instance, and turn it into a small apartment, or something like that, if you can meet the parking standards. Um, so anyway, that's, I, I hope that answers your question. There's a lot of rambling about something that I don't fully understand, but that's my kind of broad understanding of the master-planned communities. I think why it's listed there is because there is some allowance to exempt existing master-planned communities if they meet a certain density threshold from the middle housing rules.
Thank you, Mark. That's certainly more than I knew going in, so that, that helps, and I appreciate it. Uh, well, just want to ask one more time if anybody has any other input.
I have brief input, if possible. This is Commissioner McKinley. I think the food is finished. I don't think my fire alarm's going to go off. Um, so I wanted to thank Mark for his comments and everyone for sharing their perspectives tonight. Um, as we are all well aware, planning and housing especially is something that affects everyone, and it absolutely can elicit emotions from both sides. Um, I truly do appreciate the work of staff and the service of commission, and I hope we continue to disagree and continue to bring different perspectives to the table, because that's what commissions are for. So I look forward to learning from each other and implementing this project.
Thank you, Sophie. And I, I think that's something I completely agree with. Uh, there's a reason there are seven of us, not just one. Um, that being said, does anybody else want to add anything? Hearing none. Um, thank you again, Mark, for, uh, all the work you're doing on this. Um, I know it's a tight.
I'm sorry, Tim's computer quit working the sound, and he has a question.
Okay, great.
It's a real quick question for Mark. You, you mentioned earlier, uh, reference to census blocks. How much area does a census block comprise?
It, it's not by area, it's by population, and they change. So a more dense part of town is gonna have a smaller census block area than a, a less dense part of town. I actually, um, hmm, I'm not sure it's easily available. I do have a map that, uh, shows you census blocks. And I don't know if you want to bear with me maybe for a second. I might be able to pull it up fairly quickly, or I could always email it out later, but, um, it gives you some representation of census blocks here. I'm gonna try sharing my screen here really quick.
Mark, I was also thinking I could quickly show them People Speak if you need a little more time, but you've got it.
Yeah, so this map here, I'm gonna turn on a much. So I, I don't know if you can see these bold kind of dark lines. These, and I'm trying to move my cursor around them. Those are the census blocks, cen- uh, census block groups. So this is, you know, and so they're different sizes and shapes, and I, are based on population within each one. Does that help answer that question?
He said yes, and thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, thank you again, Mark, and, um, look forward to hearing more about this as we go forward. Uh, and Sandy, I think you wanted to share with us People Speak?
Yes, um, so quickly, um, uh, we have started a new platform that hopefully you can see here on my screen. Um, and, uh, it's called People Speak. It was created in Lakewood, Colorado, as a joint project of planners and software developers, um, public-private partnership. And so we have just, um, started getting familiar with it. And so your meeting is actually our first test run. Um, and so in talking with, uh, Chair Sherwood and Vice Chair Gill, um, we're thinking it might be, um, useful to have the Committee for Citizen Involvement meet, uh, and kind of get familiar with this in a meeting without, you know, it being an actual public hearing for an application that we've received. But just to show you a little bit, um, it's, our URL is SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org, and it is live, so you can go look this up. Um, and so here we have the Planning Commission Work Session. Tonight, you can join it, um, through the GoToMeeting here. So we still are using GoToMeeting for the meeting platform itself. Um, but you can get to the agenda. Um, we'll have information about the public, it says public hearing, but that's one of the things we're asking them to change. Um, it'll have that link to take you to the, the project page, sorry, right there. Um, and then going back here, uh, it has the packet. And then there will be ways for people to provide comment and such. So the idea of this is you could have a lot more accessibility to people commenting, um, to follow the meeting, in a virtual format. And so I'd like to talk a little bit about when you'd want to do that, because you're, um, we were thinking November, but also that first meeting date in November's election night. So I don't know if people have a feeling about that. But, um, I'm open to suggestions on how you want to go about this. And then, um, what date would be a good date for that type of a meeting?
Uh, first thought I have is, um, I don't think election night would be a great night to have a meeting. On the other hand, I think that, although discussing it now is totally an option, maybe, um, when everybody has a chance to look at their calendars, maybe in response to, if, if Brenda emailed us, or you, a- about potential scheduling options, and then people could sort of select options that work for them. I know I'm relatively open all the time, but since there are seven of us.
Our next meeting scheduled is November seventeenth.
And do we have any work session items before it?
No, no, it would be the only item unless something came in in the next, um, week or so. I don't see that happening, though.
If it's, if it's open, um, and it's already a day we're meeting, I'm, I'm available. Others?
I'm available then, too.
I'm available.
What, what day were we talking?
It was your, your scheduled meeting, November seventeenth.
Oh, yeah.
Might be good, and, uh, Commissioner Landen.
Okay, so it's sounding like we're getting pretty good feedback, um, on that date. So we'll go ahead. That's our regular Planning Commission date, so we'll avoid elections and we'll schedule, and we'll, we'll call it a Committee for Citizen Involvement, since that's really the focus. And we'll introduce you more to People Speak, um, or in our own Springfield, Oregon Speaks. And in the meantime, um, you can check it out. There's not a lot to look at yet, but we will put, um, the meeting on there for the next meeting, and then, um, we'll give it a go.
Thank you, Sandy. And I popped on there myself, uh, and, and poked around a little bit. But I do think it'd be helpful for any commissioners that are able to get on there beforehand, because as it's an user interface, knowing how it's used, and being able to interact with it a little bit before going in may give you ideas on what type of suggestions you could make going into that meeting.
Yeah, which prompts me to say two more things. One is that, um, you will each get your own login, so I will email you, um, to your city emails. And so you will have to set your own password. So you will be going in as a decision-maker, ultimately different than the public. And secondly, because, um, this software company is really wanting to make it useful, um, we can ask them to make changes. So I had mentioned that public hearing, and we said, well, that really should be public meeting, because not all of our meetings are hearings. So they're gonna make that change. So we do want feedback and questions, and we're learning as we go. But if you have ideas or questions that we can't answer, we can follow up with the software company and get that kind of answer and response back to you.
Thank you, Sandy. Uh, before moving past that, uh, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, hearing none. I just wanted to make note, uh, Andy put in the chat that getting that map that Mark pulled up emailed would be helpful, so I wanted to make sure that was seen. Um, other than that, uh, I know that we are, I, I know that we don't necessarily have a time limit, but we are a bit past what we originally anticipated. Not, that's a bad thing. I think there's a lot of good conversation. But as far as, because this is a work session, uh, I don't know that it's absolutely necessary that we do the last couple items, uh, business from commission or city council meetings. But if you have a report and you do want to make it, uh, I would just encourage brevity, um, but I'll open it up for that. And any reports not made could be made at the next meeting, I think.
All right, I'll work with Mark to get that map sent out to everyone.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
This is Curry. I, um, attended the, the city council meeting on the twenty-eighth, which was a work session. Um, it was further discussion on the mayor selection process. Um, they did do some narrowing of the process, but they didn't do final decisions on that, um, either the selection or the total process. So there's more to come on that. And then they had a lengthy discussion about the use of RVs for temporary housing, um, especially in emergency response to the fire, um, activity that happened. And so the staff actually, I thought, did a really great job presenting, um, the options around this. Uh, but there was pretty extensive conversation. So the initial recommendation was, um, or option was no enforcement or no enforcement with standards, or creating a longer-term, um, option for this. And so this is RVs, um, on private property, not on the streets, and, um, how they could be used for emergency purposes. So there was some conversation about, um, you know, the rules, and if people could charge rent, um, on them. Um, as proposed, there wouldn't be rent allowed. So, um, again, more conversation to come on that. Uh, no final decisions made, but a lot of really good, interesting discussion. Those were the only two items on the agenda.
Thank you, Curry. Were there any others? Hearing none, I believe, uh, that's it. I now adjourn the work session for the Planning Commission. Thank you all.
Thank you.